Good evening. It is Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is seven P. M. I call to order the first meeting for the month of September for the Speedway Town Council. I'd like to welcome those watching online and on T. V. And those of us present with us in the chamber this evening. I'd like to welcome other council members with us this evening to my far right, Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my immediate left, Vice President of the Council, Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
To his left, Councilor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
To his left, Councilor Gary Pettigo.
Good evening.
And social distancing with us this evening. And in the audience is our town manager, Carlos May, our clerk treasurer, Jacob Blaisdell, and our town attorney, Bob Clutter. We've our agenda has been posted, which we will follow this evening. Our first item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two in our agenda is approval of the minutes of our August tenth, two thousand and twenty council meeting. Those have been distributed. Any corrections to those? Hearing none, those are accepted as presented. Item three is a proclamation recognizing Bev Catterhenry. Bev, could you stand at the podium, please? And you get to listen to me read for a minute.
Okay.
So whereas Bev has dedicated over twenty-six years to Speedway Trails and countless hours working on volunteer boards and commissions, and whereas Bev has given the town of Speedway the vision, passion, and drive to create an outstanding trail system, and whereas Bev has never given up on her passion, even when faced with great challenges and obstacles that stood in her way, and whereas Bev has participated in advocating, applying for, and receiving a large grant for the expansion of Speedway Trails with the vision of connectivity to other communities, and whereas Bev has truly led with the servant's heart, inspiring our community and the next generation of community leaders, and whereas Bev and her family have lived and played in Speedway for many years, always taking pride in our town, and whereas the town council wishes to recognize these accomplishments and contributions to the town and proclaim Bev as deserving of such an honor. Now therefore be resolved that the Speedway Town Council does hereby proclaim this day, Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, as Beverly Catterhenry Day. Bev, this is your day in the town of Speedway, and we encourage residents of Speedway to celebrate her dedication and hard work in our town. Adopted this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty, and we will associate this distance, but I'd like to present it to you, if that's okay.
Okay.
So Bev, I'm not going to mention how many years I've been here, but you were here before me, and your dedication and hard work, that doesn't explain how much you've done for this town. We thank you, and this is very well deserving. So the podium's yours. If you'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you very much. My satisfaction comes in every day when I see someone on the trail, walking, running, biking, whatever it is. I see people using it, and I'm just thrilled. It just does my heart good. So appreciate it. I did find the first proclamation that the town council gave me, and it was to Speedway Trails. This one's for me now. But it was two thousand and eight. It was February, I think, two thousand and eight, the first proclamation. Without the town council support, I couldn't have done it. It took you guys supporting me and backing me up. So thank you very much for your support and being there when I needed you.
And do you have any family here with you this evening?
I got my daughter. She's the troublemaker. And my son and my daughter is Jessica. Her husband, Anthony, and the president of Speedway Trails, Frank, is here to support me. So thank you very much, and definitely when you find a good project, be sure to support them because otherwise they don't get going.
And before you leave, any council, have any other comments?
Well, I'd just like to add, I know that the hard times and dedications that you've put into this because it takes a lot. I know you've got other support people here that helped you through that process, but you just kept on pushing and pushing. And because of that, today we have trails here in Speedway. So thank you.
I had a friend say that she thought I had a noble idea, and she supported me all the way, but she felt sorry that I'd probably never get it done. So I did get it done.
You proved her wrong.
I'd just add that you've just worked so hard, and you've made such a difference. And there's no way we can repay you for your hard work.
I see it every day on the trail. That's my favorite.
It was neat Friday evening. I don't know if it was mentioned, but Friday evening there was a bench and a kind of a sail covering at Leonard Park. It was dedicated in your name, and you were celebrated, and your efforts were celebrated Friday evening. I don't know how many people were there, seventy-five to a hundred people. It was wonderful to see lots of people turn out for that, including your family and people from all over central Indiana that have worked with you. It's not just been about Speedway for you, although it's been Speedway first. You're now trying to connect us in downtown Indy and out to Farley and Henness County and beyond, and you just made such a difference. And it's really, the work's never done, though, right?
Nope. We've got a long way to go. We've got three more years to go. A special thanks to all the volunteers. Like you said, I could not have done it by myself. So thank you to all the volunteers, the lumberjack guys that helped me cut trees, and the politicians that helped me raise money. Next year, we should connect. We should start construction to connect east to downtown. In two thousand and twenty-two, we should start construction to build the bridge and go west. So we're making progress, and thanks for everybody for helping. It wasn't me that did it alone. I'm just the little squeaky wheel. They put the idea in everybody's head. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Bev.
Thank you, Bev. Item four on our agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero six, a resolution repealing Resolution two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-three. I have something to read before this is, or as it's presented. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero six seeks to dissolve the Sister City Agreement with Verano Italy, which was established in two thousand and fourteen under Resolution two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-three. I have reviewed both the Motegi and the Verano Sister City Agreements based on their established purpose and impact on the town of Speedway. We, as a council and as a town, have not been engaged heavily in either of our exchange programs that act as the core of our Sister City Agreements. We'd like to change that moving forward. After reviewing both groups, I feel confident with the diplomatic and cultural exchange taking place with the Motegi Foreign Exchange Group. Leaders from the Motegi Board have shown interest in continuing to build a better partnership between our governments and to continue to create opportunities for connectivity between Motegi Japan and Speedway, Indiana. Unfortunately, I have major concerns with the leadership and diplomacy for the Verano Italy group. To give some background, the Verano Speedway Sister City Resolution that will be voting to dissolve tonight was brought to the town in two thousand and fourteen by our former Economic Development Director, Scott Harris, in partnership with a local business owner. That same year, the students from Speedway took their first trip to Italy. In late two thousand and fifteen, Scott Harris resigned from his position with the town, which was followed by an investigation of fraud during his time as Economic Development Director. On March, correction, on March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Scott Harris entered into a plea agreement in Marion County Superior Court. Scott Harris admitted that he counterfeited an invoice related to the rental of a suite for the Speedway Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Harris continued to be part of the Speedway Foreign Exchange Board, which was an umbrella organization overseeing both the Motegi Board and the Verano Board. After his plea agreement was signed, he was asked to step down from the board in two thousand and nineteen to allow the program to continue without interference. Instead, the Verano Exchange was incorporated as a five oh one C. Three and continued to work under Scott's direction, as it does today, separate from the Motegi Exchange. With the exchange program being at the center of our Sister City Agreement, we must call upon these groups to represent our town in a way that aligns with the vision we see for Speedway. We cannot and should not, as a town council, allow a former employee who has pled guilty to fraudulent activity, represent our town. Therefore, I'm asking the council today to end the Verano Sister City Agreement. I have already received some questions today about this agenda item, and I would be happy to answer any other questions you might have. I know that there are parents concerned, as I would be as a parent, about the future of this program. Though we cannot speak to the future of the Verano group, the removal of the ceremonial Sister City title protects the town from association with Mr. Harris. However, it does not change the status of the five oh one C. Three or their ability to organize future trips. So with that, I then will then call for a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Resolution dash two thousand and twenty dash six as presented.
I'll second that.
Then a motion and a second to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero six. Is there any comments from the audience? Any comments from council?
I'll make a comment. I'd like to make a comment. I was part of, along with Vince, who was on the Redevelopment Commission at the time, and others who were on the council at the time, as a part of helping to start this, and actually made a trip, the inaugural trip, to Verano. And this, in many ways, has continued to break my heart for many years. Back when we discovered that Scott Harris had committed some fraud, we not only brought it to his attention, but we also asked him to step away until we had the opportunity to resolve the situation, and he refused to do that. And as David described, President Lindsey described, he's been asked even after he was, he pleaded guilty to this fraud, and he's continued to not step away, and it's been very disappointing. It's been difficult for the town in many ways to move forward with very valuable relationships. So as difficult as this is, I'll be voting to support this request.
I'd like to add also, I know I mentioned the Motegi Group. I think it's important to note that at the beginning of this year, members of the Motegi Board have reached out to the council and expressed a great desire to work with the town and with their board to establish a greater relationship between Motegi and the town of Speedway. And I appreciate them coming forward and willing to do that. I've asked members of the Verano Board in the past to come and meet and sit down with the town, which they have not done. And this, I think the priority in this all needs to be the students and the children that go on these trips. They're life-changing events. I can speak firsthand of that because both of my children have been, my wife and I have been, and it is a life-changing event. So however, given the actions of Mr. Harris, I feel this is the appropriate action that we, as the council, need to take this evening.
And just want to support the fact that we do want to still continue it, but only under different circumstances. So it is very passionate program, that there are a lot of people that want to continue it. And again, it is for the kids.
And I will add, I think the program can continue to operate by us canceling this agreement. That's not stopping the program as what it's running today. Believe it or not, I do watch social media, and I see all the kind comments you leave about us. And there's comments that this is going to stop the program. That's not true. This just eliminates the Sister City Agreement between Verano and the town of Speedway, but that group, as it is operating today, can still operate. I think that's important to note as well. Any other comments? Then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carries five to zero. Ordinance thirteen twenty-nine, I'm sorry, item five on our agenda, is ordinance thirteen twenty-nine, an ordinance amending the town code of Speedway, Chapter seven point zero five relating to animal licenses. Our town manager, Carlos, will present this for us this evening. Carlos?
Thank you, councilors. So as stated, this is to amend Chapter seven point zero five relating to animal licenses. If you recall, this was part of what we were going to be discussing last month's meeting. We decided to combine the two issues, even though they are completely separate. So the first portion of it basically eliminates the three-dollar fee to get an animal license for your dog. The second one is a little bit more in-depth, and this was brought about because a non-designated, non-town-affiliated, but nonprofit animal rescue group was not paying the thirty-dollar fee that was in the ordinance. And although that was a laudable thing, it opened the town up to potential litigation and/or lawsuits. And so in order to eliminate that, we decided to update the code to specifically reflect the fact that a designated animal rescue organization would be exempt from having to pay that thirty-dollar fee, thereby bringing to parity no need for lawsuits, no need for litigation. If you are an individual who wants to adopt the dog from our street department, you pay that fee. If you are an animal rescue group, then you do not have to pay that fee. And the language has been updated. Our town attorney, Bob Clutter, updated this in conjunction with myself and code enforcement. Everything was found to be good. We then discussed this with one of the animal rescue groups. They were happy with the language, and that is the thrust of this amendment to the animal ordinance. Are there any questions, councilors?
Before we have questions, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve ordinance thirteen twenty-nine as presented.
I second.
It's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance thirteen twenty-nine, and we're going to make this first reading. Our attorneys requested we have a first and second reading on this. So this will be approval of ordinance thirteen twenty-nine on the first reading. Any questions from the audience, our comments, questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance thirteen twenty-nine on first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you, Carlos.
I would like to add something, councilors, just so that we can all be on the same page. Since we are doing two readings of this, technically this will not take effect until the second reading, which will be at our next council session. But because we want to make sure that the animal rescue organization can start to work with the town again and not have to pay that fee, I would ask that you do a unanimous declaration that the thirty-dollar fee that is currently charged can be waived up until the official second reading and therefore passing of the ordinance.
Bob, or excuse me, Mr. Clutter, are we correct in saying would we have a concurrence? Would that be fine to do that? Does the council concur with that?
Yes, I concur.
I concur.
Thank you, council.
Item six on our agenda is ordinance thirteen thirty. And whoever wrote the agenda tonight, thank you. An ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding sewage work revenue bonds of the town, authorizing the issuance of the town of Speedway, Indiana Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bonds, Series two thousand and twenty, to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof and addressing other matters connected therewith. Our clerk treasurer, Jacob Blaisdell.
Thank you, President Lindsey. Yeah, so due to various actions, particularly by the Federal Reserve, interest rates are pretty low right now. And so I've been looking at ways that we can potentially refinance, restructure some of our debt to take advantage of that and reduce some of the interest costs. It does look like we have an opportunity with our sewer bonds to refinance those, and I don't want to commit to any specific exact savings, but assuming markets stay where they are and railroad price at a good spot, they would be pretty significant and certainly worth the effort and cost to go through the refinancing. And so to that end, as I kind of alluded, the market can move on us. If it does move, and it's no longer makes economic sense for us to do that, of course, we won't do the transaction. This ordinance simply kicks off the process and allows me to kind of start this refinancing and go through with the transaction, again, only if it makes financial and economic sense to do so. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance thirteen thirty as presented by our clerk treasurer.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance thirteen thirty this evening. Any questions from the audience, comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those approving ordinance thirteen thirty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven on our agenda is listed as approval of a body cam, police body cam contract. Easy for me to say. There's been a, I guess we could say a change to that, where there was some talks we had with the contractor for that. They came back with a price that was different than what was originally told, so we are going to table that with the council's concurrence to our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Item eight is approval of a town of Speedway logo design. Easy for me to say, one of those nights. That also will be tabled to our next meeting. There is still some work being done on that, and before we get a final design, we want to make sure our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So with council's concurrence, we will also table that to our next meeting.
Yes.
Agree.
And Jacob, we're not going to table the next one.
Okay.
Item nine is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our clerk treasurer. Jacob?
Yeah, I appreciate you not skipping that, and so does the State Board of Accounts. In front of you are the claims that I presented to you previously or sent to you earlier. Representing our claims from August eighth through September eleventh. I would appreciate your support on that.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims presented to us by the clerk treasurer.
I'll second that.
Then a motion and a second to approve the claims presented by clerk treasurer. Any questions from the audience, questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Jacob?
Yes, we do have some utility adjustments for this meeting. In front of you are the utility adjustments for August eighth through September eleventh as well, and would appreciate your approval.
Move that we approve the adjustments as presented by the clerk treasurer.
I'll second that.
Then a motion and a second to approve the utility adjustments as presented this evening for August eighth through September eleventh. Any questions or comments from the audience? Comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the utility adjustments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Jacob, anything else?
Just a reminder that the moratorium on utility disconnects has expired across the state. However, if folks are having any difficulty or challenges paying their bill, please call our office, three one seven, two four six, four one one one, and we can work with people to make payment arrangements. Or also, if you're having difficulty paying in general, and even a payment plan wouldn't work or be helpful, you can call a township trustee or two on one for assistance. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a report from our department supervisors, and we will begin with our Economic Development Director, Tim Gropp.
Good evening, council. I have some elaborate updates tonight on a few projects. First one was the Founder Square Project, twenty-five-hundred High School Road. Progress is being made here. Pond liner was installed for the retention pond on site, which was a big holdup for us being able to finish out all the dirt work. The liner was installed last week. Atlas remobilized this week and is working to backfill the pond, finish that out with riprap, and by the end of the week, the old swale should be backfilled. The new swale will be open and the pond will be functional at that point. So all that storm water will be diverted by the end of the week to the new system. Erosion control mats will be installed late this week, early next week as well. Calumet, which is our concrete contractor that we've been waiting to remobilize as well, has placed nearly half of the curbing today. The northbound barricades, including the left-hand turn lane on Crawfordsville Road heading north, were removed previous to this meeting, so very recently. So northbound traffic is open without barricades. The concrete work on High School Road has been completed, and the pedestals have been installed for the pedestrian crossings. Calumet will place concrete road sections tomorrow. All curbing will be completed by the end of next week. Then James H. Drew, which is our subcontractor for the intersection, the light, will complete the installation of the wiring and the pedestrian crossings next week, coordinating with D. P. W., Indianapolis D. P. W., to activate the lights. The intersection should be activated by the end of next week, and center barricades at that time will be removed to open all left-hand turn lanes. We will continue to keep Founder Square Lane, the new road, closed, but all the other barricades and functionality will be open by the end of next week, assuming that we're able to get Indianapolis D. P. W. out there next week. So we're working on that right now, and hopefully all that lines up. By the end of the month, all paving should be completed on new roads, and at that time, all southbound barricades will be removed. Any questions on Founder Square? On the Will Shaw, I just, there's not a lot to see. Just know, I did speak with the partner that is working on that proposal. Everyone's been, seems encouraged by the progress. They're just, they should have the signed, they had a signed agreement that was contingent upon an operating agreement, hotel operating agreement, that has been completed. They're just waiting for the final version. That is supposed to be signed by the end of the week. They have already taken some steps to look at some of the engineering and kind of modify some of the projects, but a lot of that work is going to be underway. They don't want to get too far ahead of themselves because not everything's signed yet, but we anticipate as soon as that's done, hopefully by the end of this week, that that process will take full effect, and they'll dive in on the engineering and kind of make modifications to make the project more efficient and work a little bit better. In addition, they'll be working on the financing at that point. They won't start the financing until everything's signed as well. So all that being said, we anticipate there being some site improvements, cleaning up the site a little bit by the end of the year with, most likely, by the time we get through all the reengineering, there's still agreements that need to happen with the town. We've let them kind of get their partnership agreement in place before we've sat back down with the town and looked at our economic development agreement. So we probably won't see any actual building on site till spring of two thousand and twenty-one. So as soon as we get past this initial couple steps, we'll try to get you an updated timeline as to when we think we'll remobilize and then when the completion date would be as well. So any questions on Will Shaw at this time? All right. And then on the Town Hall project, we're a little bit behind. I'd been announcing that we- I'd been announcing that we were on schedule due to some delays with deliveries, specifically because of COVID and delays in supply chains. We're running about a month behind. So we originally were going to take possession of the building around December eighth. It's probably going to be the early part of January now, it's looking like. We're looking at opportunities to possibly do some temporary occupancy to be able to move in certain sections or not. We're not sure if we can work that out or not. But it's not a huge delay. There will still be a gap between when we're able to move in, move everything over, be functional and then open to the public. So more likely February, early March will be when it's fully functional there. But with that being said, you're going to see significant progress on the exterior. Most of the work to this point has been on infrastructure, utilities, HVAC on the inside. They're starting all the site work. Currently, they are finishing demolition of the old vault portion this week. Tentative completion is Wednesday. They will then, our contractor will mobilize on site work Thursday. And at that point, they will close down that access road. It's actually called, for confusion's sake, Crawfordsville Road. But it's not Crawfordsville Road, it's the access portion. They will complete all the right-of-way improvements first. Expected to be all done with those by September thirtieth. That includes the north entrance. Twentieth Street will be consolidating that entrance to one. The new Crawfordsville Road entrance, which is a ride-in, ride-out and modification to the alleyway as we talked about. So then they'll move, once all that is done, they'll move to the interior work. They'll mill and pave the parking lot and restripe that, which will take about two weeks. And then they'll, bricks that we had ordered for the accent brick have been ordered about thirteen weeks ago. There was an anticipated time of eleven weeks, but those should be in. So you'll start seeing them complete the exterior portions of the building at that time. So over the next month or so, you'll see significant improvements to the exterior of that facility. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for your support, Tim.
Next is our police chief, Jim Campbell.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank Councilor Pedego and Carlos for attending our police commission meeting. Hopefully it was a positive experience.
It was.
It was. We appreciate the fact that you came. You know, it's kind of hard to believe, but we have not met since the five hundred. I don't know how many of you remember that. But a very quick update, no fans, no problems. We made, we made two arrests, drunk and stupid. One of them was even wanted on a warrant. He just picked a bad day to come to the race. Honestly, I mean, it's still one, we still have to be there. Now, the department pretty much took the inside and, you know, we had some help from the sheriff's department, ran a couple of their bicycle patrols on Georgetown and Main Street. IMPD's on-duty sickles came out. Obviously, we didn't need them for the traffic. It's probably estimated, we may have had a thousand people who actually came out, sat in some of the lots and some of them watched it on TV. But so overall, it was a successful event. I'm not sure they're happy how it finished under yellow. But, you know, at that point, at least the race was done. So we appointed a new officer today, Kyle Ball, who we swore in this morning. Thanks to Jacob. And my last one is, Shred It's been canceled. I don't know, I think that's been put out. You know, we'll wait to hear from Crime Stoppers, you know, when they'll get back into the shredded business. But, you know, as for the fall, it has been canceled. And sorry about the fire department mask. Chuck'll loan you his if you want to borrow one. But other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Next is our fire chief, Bob Fishburne.
You're just too tight. You just don't want to share. Well, good evening. Left you guys a small gift there.
Thank you.
If you've got grandkids or anything that need them, we've got them for kids too. So we'll, we'll hook you up. First of all, I want to thank two organizations. You know, as many of you know, Friday was the anniversary of nine eleven. Probably not a person here who doesn't know where they were that day. But we still have a lot of community support for both police and fire. Coca-Cola Company provided lunches and they did that through two local businesses, Dawson's and Barbecue on Bourbon. Normally, they do a big cookout at their place and they invite police and fire and our ambulance workers, even some of the Wayne Township people come over. But because of COVID, they thought it'd be a good way to support two local restaurants that were able to work with them. So they provided lunch and dinner so that the police officers on second and third shift, I think, were able to go. We really want to thank them for that. We also had massive care packages sent to both stations by Tri-Cappa. And we want to thank them, I mean, snacks, chips, homemade stuff, drinks, all kinds of things that the guys will enjoy over the next week or so. They still have some left, so very thankful for that. Fire Prevention Week is coming up in October. We actually have a meeting with the cable guys on Wednesday to kind of set up what we're going to do. We're going to give the schools just a plug-and-play video. I'm going to do some reading on video for kindergartners and first graders that I've done in the past at the different schools. And then we're also going to field questions that our battalion chief, Jeff Hartman, who does our fire prevention and he's usually there to answer questions in person, can get back to teachers via email. So we're trying to make that as effective as possible for all the Speedway schools and the preschools. So last but not least, I shared with Carlos after our department head meeting, we are in the process of applying for a public safety resilience grant. And it's actually about energy conservation. We've got a gentleman coming tomorrow to evaluate some windows and doors that we have that we think would be very, very highly, you know, approved for that grant. And we kind of have a lead-in and a heads-up on how we can get that. We don't know what that's going to look like yet, but we're in the process of applying for that also. So that's really about it. That's all I have unless you have questions for me. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our park and recreations director, Tammy Smith.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I wanted to say what an honor it was to be a part of the dedication for Bev Catta Henry at Leonard Park on Friday. She's been the driving force in the success of Speedway Trails, which has added so much to our town. I've heard from several people upset that they did not know about it. Another testament to Bev's impact was so many people wanting to acknowledge their appreciation. The reason we did not post anything formal was for two reasons. One, it was a surprise and we didn't want Bev to know about it. And two, because of the current situation with the social gathering limits of people. However, Speedway Community TV was there filming to commemorate the occasion and it should be available for everyone to see later this week. So I wanted to let everybody know that, so they can see and reach out to Bev with their appreciation. She's done a lot. The banners that were around the roundabout by Arrow McLaren, What Five Hundred Means To Me, that had the drawings on it from all the kids from the different elementary schools and the junior high. If people have not known this yet, those banners are now hanging in Meadowwood and Leonard Park. Most of them are at Leonard on the back fence east side of the park, as well as the tennis courts. And two of the banners are at Meadowwood Park on the fence by the water tower. So those who have children that want to go see their drawings, they can still do that. We hope to have those up hopefully the rest of the year. So they've been a nice addition to the parks. We've had a lot of compliments about them. I want to do a recap for our concerts. We were able to get four concerts in. We normally do six, but under the circumstances, we were unable to do that. Now, more than ever, we see the benefits parks provide a community on so many different levels. The most obvious are fun and physical fitness, but another benefit is mental health. Relaxation does wonders for a person's mental health. And I'm so thankful we were able to get four of our concerts in. I consistently heard thanks and praises for having the concerts. Some of our wonderful sponsors contacted me because community members reached out to them and thanked them for sponsoring. I can't thank the sponsors enough and I know they know how sincere I am about that. It's great that some people reached out to them and I encourage more people to reach out and shower our great sponsors with gratitude and appreciation. I want to again acknowledge and thank the following sponsors for continuing to support Speedway Parks and our community, especially during this unprecedented time. Speedway Lions Club, Westler Engineering, Alliance Insurance Group, Donegal Insurance Group, Indianapolis Motor Speedway and Fun Days Ice Cream and Sweets. I also want to give a shout out to Hoosier Analytics. We needed some pictures of the parks for various things with our improvements that we're going to be doing in Leonard and they were gracious enough to provide us with aerial pictures and videos of both parks. And with that, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Next is our Public Works Report and our water superintendent, Luke Adams, is here with us this evening.
Good evening, council. We will start with the street department. This week, Rob and his guys continue to mow and weed eat the common areas throughout town to include Main Street and the trail maintenance. They also have been doing yard waste and cleaning the main sewer lines. Waterworks, the surface water plant is currently online. Our new alum, hyperion, is working well with our treatment process. We've been able to cut our sludge disposal down. We're getting longer filter runtimes. And I've seen positive results with our turbidity readings. We had two water main breaks last week in the distribution system. One was at Eagle Lake Landing Apartments and the other one was at the new government center. The crew did a great job from start to finish in making those repairs. For the month of August, we treated and pumped out thirty-three million, nine hundred forty-two thousand gallons of water out of the ground and thirty-seven million, eight hundred eighty-one thousand gallons out of Lily Eagle Creek. With norm sanitation, it's been business as usual for the month of August. They treated and reclaimed a hundred and twenty-eight million gallons of water. The phosphorus removal project is ongoing and on schedule. This week, they are boring under the drive so that the chemical feed lines can be installed. That's all I got.
Thanks, Luke.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Next is our communications director, Kelly Turner.
So we have Run Three One Seven this week. We've been talking about it for several months now. It had been postponed from May during COVID. They've gotten their approvals from the state to have the event with the certain health code stipulations. So that'll be this Thursday. You might have noticed the red and white yard signs throughout the community indicating the path of the race. It will be rolling closers throughout the community except for Fourteenth to Gilman, which will be closed for the duration of the race. They'll actually close it down at four PM and it'll be closed through the end, which is expected to be around nine, nine-thirty PM. So there will be no parking between Fourteenth and Gilman from eight AM until after the race. If your car is still parked there at four PM, it will be towed. So make sure you're watching for those signs. Street Department will make sure it's very well marked where you can and cannot park. In addition to that, if you want to look at the map to see where those rolling closures might take place, it will be throughout some of the neighborhoods for around twenty minutes at a time, depending on how long, how many people are going through. So if you check out our website or our Facebook page, the police have also posted it as well. You can see if it's going to impact in front of your house. I did want to remind everyone that October fifth is the last day to register to vote. So please make sure if you're not registered to hop online or go to your local BMV and get that paperwork filled out. With COVID reducing the number of people who can be at a football game or who are wanting to go out into the community, our cable guys have worked really hard this year to make sure that not only basketball, but football are streaming live. So if you haven't seen, the first couple games already streamed live. It went really well. And so keep an eye out for the next game to see if anyone's, sorry, keep an eye out for the next game to see what's going on there. So last thing, I wanted to thank several of the businesses on Main Street who donated to a gift in Bev's honor. They wanted me to relay their appreciation for Bev and all of the hard work that she's done for the trail system that have really connected the community to their businesses. That a lot of businesses are getting foot traffic, reducing parking needs in the community and giving people a safer alternative to walk home after spending an evening out on the town on Main Street. So they wanted to pass along their thanks and I want to thank them for donating to a gift basket that we were able to provide with Bev, to Bev at the event on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a report from our town manager, Carlos May.
Thank you, councilors. Well, as you've heard from the department heads, things are moving along in a good direction. We're advancing. We're not stagnating, we're not stopping. Good news, as Tim said, with Will Shaw. Hopefully, everything is ironed out here in the next few weeks. We can make an announcement and get moving on that project. The five hundred, as chief said, no fans, but there were right around a thousand people outside just soaking up the sounds. I showed up with my daughter and we had breakfast, well, brunch, more of a brunch, at Charlie Brown's and she, she just thoroughly enjoyed it. It was nice to see the community come out, support each other, even though we didn't have three hundred thousand visitors from around the world. It was still a nice day. Community involvement here is phenomenal. As Chief Fishburne said, with the Coke plant inviting basically all first responders, police, fire, to have a free meal on them is just great. We sent that out to everyone and I don't know what the turnout was, but it seemed to be very, very good. I was able to do a ride-along of the trails with Bev and just seeing what she has done, not knowing her background or her history, was very, very impressive. But I'll take exception with one thing that Tammy said, that she wanted to keep it a secret. The secret was not very well kept. As we were, as we were finishing up the last little route there and she looks up and she says, oh, look, the bench dedication for my bench that I wasn't even invited to. And Frank and I had to stay silent because we obviously knew there was a little bit more. But it was nice to see everyone show up and it was nice to be able to ride along the trails. Another thing that I would like to discuss in terms of community involvement is the Home Helpers Program that the Speedway CDC does. They wanted me to let the community know that their next date of work is going to be September twenty-sixth, but they are looking for a few more volunteers. So if anybody in the community that's watching this would like to volunteer, the Home Helpers Program is they select a few homes where folks are unable to do some of the work themselves on the exterior and they come in and help that homeowner. And if you would like to be involved, you can reach out to SpeedwayHomeHelpers@gmail.com. Just tell them that you're willing to volunteer and they'll assign you a house. And the date again is September twenty-sixth for their workday. Other than that, I just want to again thank the staff. They, they do a lot of work and they do it very, very well. Four or five months on the job now and every month, they just seem to keep operating at that level of excellence that helps the town and me do my job better. So I want to thank them again. Other than that, everything's going well. I'm pleased to be here and I look forward to our next council meeting. Any questions?
Carlos, I have a question on that. Home Helpers?
Yeah.
With COVID, are, where are they meeting at and what time? I know in the past, we've all met over at the Annex, but that was sort of tight quarters with everybody that volunteered.
Yeah, that is not going to happen. So social distancing rules still apply. Folks are going to need to wear a mask. All the Home Helpers are doing just outside work at the homes. And so they've assigned a team captain, I suppose you could call them, for each house. And the folks are going to meet, their teams are going to meet directly at the house. So there won't be a huge mass and then break and go from there. It's literally, you contact them, they'll assign you the house. I can't tell you the times because each captain is arranging, you know, the unique schedule with the homeowner. So one could start at nine AM, one could start at four PM. I just don't have that information. But they are going to meet directly there and they're going to have their distancing.
All right, thank you.
My understanding too is that a couple of, three of those teams might actually do it on a different day based on the availability of the homeowner.
Exactly, exactly. So I would just, I would highly recommend you reach out to SpeedwayHomeHelpers@gmail.com. Exactly, exactly. So I would just, I would highly recommend you reach out to SpeedwayHomeHelpers@gmail.com. They will respond within a day, they told me, and they'll give you all that detailed information.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Number 12 is a report from our council members. Councilor Eileen Fisher.
I just want to again extend how proud it is to have somebody like Bev Caddahenry involved in our town, and how she has just really pushed the trails as well as they are. And, you know, it has brought our community together. Trails do that, especially in this time. You see them used probably more than what they have been, which is really exciting to see. And I think that taking it next to Marion County and connecting it eventually out to Hendricks County is just even going to improve it more. And I just really cannot say thanks enough to her for everything that she has done. I mean, everything behind the scenes, her hard sweat that she's put in on weekends, cutting and cleaning and all that good stuff. But I know she's had a lot of supporters, too. So it's not just her, but she has really kept it going. So thanks, Bev.
Thank you. Next, Councilor Gary Pedego.
Thank you, President Lindsay. Got just a couple, three or four things here. First of all, as a follow-up to Kelly mentioning that voter registration ends on October 5th, we're just 50 days away from Election Day, 50 days from today. And there's still a very great need for poll workers all throughout Marion County, which, by the way, back in the primary, we only had, I think, 22 locations here in the county. That's being expanded here for the fall election to 188. So it's still not quite what we've had, you know, prior to the COVID, but much closer. And out of those 188 locations, I think two were in Speedway, three, three in Speedway. So we need clerks and inspectors that are paying positions. I think the clerk's $100 a day, and the inspector's 200 for the entire day. It's, it's a long day. I mean, the polls are open for 12 hours. But if you're, you know, anybody here, anybody at home listening, has a little extra time on their hand and wants to get involved, that's a good way to do it. And lastly, I just learned here last week that Gleaners now also has opened up their volunteers again as of September 8th. So if you, again, want to find a way to give back to the community, they're looking for people. They need tons of people. And you can go online to gleaners.volunteerhub.com and pick the shift and the day, and whenever you can spare a few hours, they would greatly appreciate your help. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Gary Rix.
Thank you. I would, I appreciate Eileen's comments. Again, I won't reiterate that, but I do appreciate Bev's done for the trails and to tag on what Gary was describing. You know, we have several restaurants, several other businesses in this town. We immediately, a lot of folks think of Main Street. We have others around that are scattered around town, certainly at the shopping center, but beyond, who have really been working hard to make a go of it in spite of COVID. So when you have the opportunity, frequent a Speedway business. When you have an opportunity to have dinner, lunch, breakfast, whatever it might be, try to frequent a Speedway business. You live here, you work here. If you do that, there'll be a better chance that they'll be here six months to 12 months from now when, when hopefully COVID begins to break and we move, move beyond. But it's really important to support, support our local businesses. I want to just reiterate the importance of 9/11. I cannot believe it's been 19 years. As someone said earlier, I think it was Bob, someone, everybody knows where they were. And the folks that lost their lives, but the folks that, that worked so, so very hard. Not just that, the couple of days in involving New York, but beyond that. I mean, there was so much fear throughout the country. And there are folks that joined the military as a result of it. There are folks that stepped forward, became police officers and firefighters. And with that, I want to encourage everyone to support our police officers and support our firefighters, because especially in these times, they're not as respected as they might, they once were. And as disappointing as it is to me, that's a reality. And just a little bit of encouragement would go a long way for those folks. So with that, I would also encourage folks to be aware of Run 317. It's a terrific fundraiser for the Lions who are volunteering as course supervisors or course workers. And just be aware of that event on Thursday evening. With that.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Vice President of our council, Vince Noblet.
Thank you. I just want to bring a few things to the public's attention. I know from calls that we've been receiving that there have been a lot of power outages on the, in the Cunningham Road area. It's important that when you experience a power outage, that you call IPL with the outage. And that way, it's booked in through their records, and they can see exactly how widespread it is, and where the problem, where the cause is being generated from. The second thing is that Dave and I met with Stefano DePonte at Delara. Had a great meeting. And we're working with them to help them with the business opportunities. And Carlos has been involved to, on a congressional level, to help them along. It's a great relationship that we had, and we appreciate their business in Speedway. Other things that I want to follow up on is, Carlos, I made you aware of the signage and the, basically, the need for signage around the roundabout. We're still working with DPW to get some additional signage to slow the traffic down. I just noticed that we lost three yield signs. I don't know if that's a record or not. But again, it goes to the speed of traffic that some people feel that they have to proceed around the roundabouts. And because we do have a lot more pedestrians using our, our trails, and they're using Georgetown Road as a north-south corridor, that it's important that we, you know, get that basically, traffic slowed down and allow them a safe crossing of, around the roundabout in that area. That's all I have for this evening.
Great. Thank you. Final item is my report. I again want to thank Bev. This is her day, as we acknowledged beginning of the meeting. When I started on the council, Bev, I remember, came to me and said, "Hey, I need your help." And she had this vision of trails going through Speedway, and lo and behold, she's got it done, and she's still working at it. So words can't describe the hours and the time and the effort that she puts into it, and we can't thank her enough for that. And as Gary said, and I believe others have said, when you are in town and you're, don't want to cook at home, visit a Main Street business, visit a business in our shopping center, visit, help support our businesses in town, and wear your mask and stay safe. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:56 PM.